The time of the clock has arrived, has arisen, so I shall call this meeting to order. Please rise and join in with other members.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, establish a forum. Julie, do we have a forum? Okay, item number four, approval of the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of items?
Removal of eight B, the guiding coalition presentation. That was put in as a placeholder, and then it just got left on there. It's likely they will present him next month on the goals for the guiding coalition this school year.
So that will be in that total meeting. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Aye.
No.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, announcements. And our item under here is studio representative introductions. Welcome. We do have an audience, not in studio, but on YouTube. So I think it would be good if you could come over to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Alright.
Yes.
This one in?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know where this camera is.
Don't worry, it's fine.
Kaylee, you can say it up there.
Okay. My name is Emma Boden, and I'm a senior at Pittsville High School. Some sports I play are basketball and volleyball.
I'm Kaylee Dickerson. I'm also a senior at Pittsville High School. I play volleyball, basketball, and softball.
Besides sports, what else can you do at school?
I'm in a lot of clubs. I'm president of NHS and vice president of student council right now.
I'm also, I've just been in a lot of clubs. I'm in FC CLA. I'm treasurer of that. And I'm also treasurer of NHS and treasurer of student council.
So you're the money person?
Yes.
Okay. Why, why, why did you folks get selected? Why did you volunteer for this?
Well, we are the only people who volunteered. But also, we just thought it would be really interesting to get to learn more about how this works and learn more about the school board in general.
Any thoughts to add to that, Kaylee?
I just really am interested in how the ongoing of the school goes about. And it's nice, it's interesting to learn about them.
Any other questions for us, students?
Welcome, you ladies.
Okay. Item number six, celebrations.
Well, the celebration began first with the school under our belts last week. And as I indicated in my update to you, that first week, I think with both the kids and the staff, was exhausting. But a lot of smiling faces. And I would briefly ask the three administrators if you want to kind of comment on what you saw in your building and just kind of any takeaways you have from that first week.
Lot of news for all of us, you know, just new first day out of the classroom. And, you know, having our freshmen in the building too. It's a, it's a blocked schedule, so a little bit different for a lot of, a lot of different students as well, staff. But just a lot of good conversations. Their teachers are jumping in and starting to teach right away. And which is also great, but also, you know, that relationship always is happening each and every day. So my junior years and seniors are getting ready to go on to their internships. So side of those up has been a lot from our CG Academy and a lot of work on the backside of things. So, you know, a couple of kids are already going out on to their jobs second week of school, so it's really exciting to see those things, so.
And in the elementary building, there's been lots of chatter, but good chatter and smiling faces. I created a little, kind of a game with our students for them so I can get to learn their names. That they have to write their names down on a piece of paper. They have to come up and introduce themselves to me. And then I take their name and I put it into a drawing. And so now I've kind of become like a celebrity, like missing down the hall. And I thought this is the answer, I had a feeling, like screaming down the hall. And I said, I just walked into the volleyball game and the eight, three girls were like... Like for me, that's huge, like they want to talk to the principal. And it's a good thing. And so, and then I heard that when I'm drawing names the next day I'm morning announcements, there's like, oh! Like, oh, that was the wrong colored piece of paper, it's not me. And then it's like, I pick another one. So, but if that's what it takes so that I can learn names, I will do that. But it's been great, so we'll have them back in the building.
Something I've appreciated that Leslie does is she doesn't, she... What do you use to record your morning announcements?
Just Google meets.
Google meets? So she records her morning announcements and sends them out to all staff so that she's talking to the computer, you know, video. It's kind of a nice little reference to be able to go back through. Teachers can go back and show it to the kids. Because shocker, a lot of kids don't listen to announcements from their own PDA system.
And then I also, they could see my face, and they could get to know. And they could even watch them at home later, famous during the day. Our staff members, our parents here too, they can watch it when you talk, so.
Danielle?
As a parent, and as a district, I've always known it's a great education here, but it's a whole different lens walking through the hallways day-to-day basis and being able to step in classrooms and observe firsthand how dedicated our staff are across the board. Whether it's the janitors, hallway custodial staff helping out, student services, it's in all hands on deck. And everybody truly tries to help with all the different scenarios that come up. But it's so busy, it's very busy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our administrative team? Okay. Let's move on to agenda item number seven, the consent agenda items. A, meeting notice certification. B, regular meeting minutes of August 12th. C, special meeting minutes of August 19th. D, financial status. E, resignations. F, hirings. Well, under resignations, Haley Swisland, junior high softball coach, under hirings, PCC lead teacher. Number two, PCC lead teacher. Number three, special education care professional. And number four, custodian. Are there any questions about the consent agenda?
I think the move to discuss letter, that hiring?
Okay. Do you have a question?
Not the statement.
Well, also need to remove item E1 for separate vote.
Ah, that's right.
Do you motion for that? Right, can you motion for it?
Okay. But first, if there's a statement about F, we need to do the statement about F prior to approving it. Chris, go ahead.
Alright. So, three out of four hirings have been budgeted for. We're less than two months away from asking taxpayers to approve $6 million, $6 million over the next four years due to the lack of operational costs. It seems to be premature to approve a non-budgeted employee with a benefit package today. At this time, I understand that wages and benefits can be drawn from Fund 26 and may well likely fit within the approved preliminary budget number one. Whether or not the referendum passes, we've announced that we forecast a shortfall. Maybe those funds could then be directed to some of our possible approaching shortfall operational costs. We don't need to put the cart before the horse today. This position should unfortunately wait until the board has spoken. And yes, I understand that others' position would ease some of the responsibilities that others now must cover. But with today's inflation crisis, every family, business, and institution is forced to deal with repercussions of poor financial decision-making on a state and federal level. No matter what our situation is, there will always be improvements that could be made. We may be faced with reality checks soon.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments? I would, if there are no comments or no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and F as presented. A, B, C, D, F, okay. So we're not, A, B, C, D, F, right. We're not, we're not, right, we're taking out E, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second? I will second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? If none, then I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and F as presented signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, four to one. Next, we need a motion to approve the resignation of Haley Swisland as junior high softball coach. That is under item E, number one. And we know that Chris needs to abstain from this.
Will abstain first.
Yeah. So is there a motion to approve item E1?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussions? All in favor of approving item E1 signify the same aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, four, zero, with one abstention. Okay. Next, we're on to number eight, information-only items. District administrators report.
So I wanted to take a moment to kind of walk the board through our referendum timeline update here. So the first slide that you'll see...
Can I just make a mention that when I click on it, I get therapy dog? And I don't have your... So I either need to move or someone needs to send it.
I'm gonna send it to you right now. Any other board members have that issue?
I just attached it up.
Bear with me for one moment.
It's okay, I just can't see it sitting in the corner.
No, it's, it's right this way.
So you're sending it to email or are you...
I'm sending it to your school email.
Okay. No, that's okay.
Hold it. Let me know when you're in. You should have an email link at the top right now.
Yeah, I haven't sent it yet. Cyrus' face must be easy.
Any, yeah? It's in the mail. I'm waiting for the faces to pop up at the top. There, there. I'll wait until you're in. I see Julie.
Yeah, I've got my email open, but...
I assume I didn't. Yeah, Rick, you're in.
Okay, you're somewhere that I'm not.
Oh, Mary Ann, I know why. Because you're outlook populated.
Oh!
User on my part, okay, try it again.
There it is.
Okay. So this is a tentative timeline that we put together. Some of these things in here, this is very generic. There's no dates, specific dates left within them up. That's something we're working towards. On a couple of the later slides, you'll see the calendar that's put together as far as going to different town meetings to answer questions. I do want to stress at the beginning, I shared Friday, I shared that ethics, referendum ethics document with all staff in the district and with the school board as far as our job is to inform, not advocate during the referendum. So our job is simply to answer questions and to share information. You'll see the website that I'm going to show you, the website that they put together for us. There's no vote yes on there, it just simply says vote. So that's something that's very important to know, has been shared with all staff. So when we go, you know, when I'm at these meetings, my job is not to try to convince people, as in, you know, convincing them to vote yes, it's to share information and inform and answer any questions that taxpayers may have regarding the referendum. So we are into the, you know, the September portion of this where the media release went out about a week ago. And a little over a week ago, I've done a communication with the families. We're going to set up a couple of community forums here, one each month in the Fine Arts Center, and then we're going to go meet voters where they're at. So Mary Ann had shared today a document. We're going to do some coffee chats. I'm going to go to various, the cafe down to Babcock, anywhere that they'll have us for coffee and to meet folks where they're at and answer, answer any questions that they may have and share information on the referendum. So any questions about the timeline here? The board has seen this report, it's just been updated a little bit. Okay. So this calendar that you've seen, I apologize, looks better up on there. This is a list of those, the community presentations and then also the difference. So Deb has found out when all the town meetings are forming and then has reached out to the town chairpersons to ask if I could come into a presentation, answer any questions. So we're trying to arrange those over the next seven weeks as far as to make it to all of the town meetings. And then once again, those coffee, the coffee chats. And we had talked about doing something on a Friday at the cafe for lunch for a fish fry.
Right.
So, board members are certainly welcome to attend any of these events. You're not obligated, but you're welcome to attend if you want to attend. I'm going to attend as many of these as I can. You'll be able to zoom in. You have a copy of this file, so if you want to see specifics down here. Some of these are placeholders, but Deb has, I believe Deb noted the ones where we're confirmed at the meetings are confirmed, are noted on there.
Yeah, I have a different one. I see we're 10, 11, and 12 actually used wrong on here now.
Okay.
In September?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, because we switched those. We've switched those to doing, doing those in October, right?
Right. Or is Finley just going to be a direct letter?
Well, Finley, so a couple of the townships have two or three voters. So in those situations, what I'm going to do is actually directly nail the voters in there. I'm going to send them a letter. Just individually. And we have two voters, and I believe we have three in another one of the townships. I will send them those. Rock. So. So that, that kind of lays it out. We'll get that, this was shared by C, so we'll get those dates corrected on this calendar. The one that Deb shared her view is accurate with the board last week. Deb, you want to scan ahead to the website? So we're going to have a link on our website to this specific referendum website here. And as you can see, the logo up above, if you can go back up for a second. As I indicated, it does not say vote yes, it just says vote. It goes to that, that piece where when we are school employees, you're not allowed to advocate for or against a referendum during, during the time contracted. As individuals outside of the school day and in your own capacity, it would be important, like if I'm advocating, I'm not doing it as a district administrator, I'm doing it as a taxpayer in the degree of course. Same thing with board members, is that you're not speaking as a board member. You can have your personal opinion, but you're not speaking as a board member when you're advocating for or against a referendum. If that all makes sense, so.
Are there any questions about that? And about the difference between that, the two things, the advocacy versus factual?
So it's actually a legal question, not a preference question? For the faction issues? Yeah.
Yes, yes, just shit, like, okay, like, why are you going to refer on them? Well, these are the budget things. Jason, can you talk a little bit about what you're envisioning of these things? We talked about a couple holster boards.
We were going to do holster boards, not because a lot of the townships don't have digital media to be able to show, like, so we're going to make some holster boards up. Four or five things. We're going to try to keep it simple and then get questions, kind of laying out the case of, you know, this is how we got here and laying out our case. And then I anticipate the majority of the time being answering any questions that folks may have. So we're going to try to keep it simple. We don't want to end up bombarding people with fourteen or fifteen slides. But I think a kind of question that we're going to get is, you know, you can lay out budgetary why we need this. People are going to want to know what it does pass. Like, why don't you tell people that? So you said we don't know, it seems a little, little too vague.
Well, I think we're pretty clear in some of the, and you have probably seen all the information, but basically, our operating reserve will be...
Gone after next year.
After next year.
And I would, Nate, it's a valid question. What I would tell people is we can't cut our way out of this right now as far as, you want to talk about reduction in staff. We can't cut our way, we're looking at a $650,000 deficit with, with the size of our district. I think I had used that one scenario a couple of months ago is even if we were to go down 20 students in enrollment, that doesn't mean that you can reduce a section. That just means it might be three kids at one grade level, one kid. You still need two teachers at that grade level. You're going to have classes of 38 or 40 students. I certainly would tell people, we would look at everything that I would say that we have. You know, we are always trying to be fiscally responsible when we're doing. And that's the balance, you know, I think I said this my first year. We, there's a balance between being fiscally responsible but also trying to meet the needs of our students. You know, I've heard people use the term like district of choice, which you hear that a lot, not in Pittsville, but everywhere, district of choice. And sometimes you have to find, like, where are the priorities to do those things? Because sometimes becoming that district of choice means, you know, that you're going to have to make some expenditures to do those things. One of the stark pieces I laid out was when you want to talk about the haves and the have-nots, it's because of the funding formula. One district compared apples to apples to another district, same size, if you took student to student, we did $1.5 million a year more to operate a local district than we would. So I would, I would be very, you know, Nate, I think what it is, I've just laid the case out, be very honest about it. I'm not going to, you probably heard some districts that have said, like, if this doesn't pass, we're going to cut athletics, or we're going to do this. I mean, when you really look at, like, those types of things, it's a drop in the bucket. Like, cutting athletics, you're going to lose kids, kids are going to go somewhere else if you cut athletics. Cut band and choir, like, I don't believe in saying things that aren't, things that you're prepared to do or that are going to make a real difference. But I would answer those questions honestly is that we couldn't cut our way out of this. So would we have to revisit what we're asking if it fails in November? Yeah, absolutely, but, you know, the, you saw what the projected deficit does the year after. And we would be out of our reserve funds at the end of next year. I mean, Pam, you have a comment, too much share for the business side of it?
No, and I did share those graphs. I mean, the graphs, I think, probably depicted the best is when you look at them and then 25, 26, it's, it's basically gone without the...
Yeah. And, and that's factual. Yes, yes, so.
And, and I mean, Nate, if you were to put me on the spot and say, what are some ideas you would have? We would obviously review every single position in the district from top to bottom. If you recall, last year, I had proposed not rolling over any administrative contracts to the board, which the board approved, to the two-year rollover for that very reason, to give flexibility. We would look at anything and everything. I kind of feel that we'd do that now, but we would, we would have to do that and see if there were other savings. We're constantly looking at areas for savings. Probably the biggest piece of all this is the federal funding, drying up all the grant, you know, the grant funding, all the federal funding that was available. They didn't give the per pupil increases and inflationary costs, things aren't getting cheaper. So I would just, I would answer the questions as honestly as I could, but to, to say to folks like, we're going to have to cut, I don't even want to envision what that would look like.
I, I don't think that cuts could not make up a $650,000 operating deficit.
And that's this year. I certainly understand that this is a good one, but... Yep.
I'm sure it is. And, and that's why it's important for us to be able, I believe, as a board, since we all voted for going to referendum, I believe it's important for us to be present at some of these events. Not to advocate, but really to present the facts and show that it's a board thing. It's not, it's, yeah, it's not an administrative thing, it's a board thing. It's part of our board responsibility to make sure we have the fiscal gear involved to run a district.
And, you know, talking about freezes, you know, Nate, as I'm pondering, like, talking about freezes like wage freezes, where you're not, but that's a double-edged sword that I talked about, and one of our pillars is attractive, you're training, you know, quality staff. And if you're doing wage freezes, you know, that, that ends up being a double-edged sword is if you're losing staff and ultimately, you know, that's that balance I talked about of trying to be fiscally responsible but also ensure that kids in Pittsville are getting the same opportunities as kids in Portland, Bridger, and Coos, or Wisconsin Rapids. And it's a challenge, I'm not going to say it's easy. I'm sure many of us have been losing sleep over this. I think I commented last month, the reality is, Pam, we could, we probably should have considered this a year ago, but we, you know, we went through it, we froze some things and tried to see, see what would happen at the state level. And, you know, nothing happened, kind of at that point, you know. So, but that's a valid question. I don't, I don't know if that sounds like a bunch of word salad, but I just think there aren't a lot of options outside of that. Any questions? There will be an FAQ section that will be loaded onto this landing page for the referendum. So that will do some of the more common questions. And that would be one that I would give, Nate, is probably going to be a problem question, is what if, the way you do it if not.
Is that it for the district administrators?
That's, well, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. If not, thank you, Jason. And we'll move on to item number nine, discussion action items. The first item there are the board goals. We met as a board in a special meeting. And we established a number of goals. This is my draft. I tried to keep it simple without a lot of the flowery words that some other districts use. And so that opened, we're all open to feedback and to discussing these goals and if they're feasible for us for the, the current school year.
I have one comment. I would just change the word activity in the second part. I think it's just about district activities. I think it's like a district operational budget. I mean, like, it's operation, I mean, it's not just, we're not looking to fund band. We're looking to fund the whole, I mean, so, I mean, not that we need to fund band, but it's not, it's not that small, it's actually much bigger.
Yeah.
I think.
So changing it to district operations.
Correct.
Okay. Deb, if you could make that change. Any other comments? Okay. Deb, if you could make that change, please. And then, do we, well, it is an action item. Do we need to, I would entertain a motion to approve the goals or the district goals as amended? I'm sorry, not the district goals, the board goals.
I'll make motion to approve board goals as presented.
Is there a second?
What's second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the board goals as amended. Any further discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next item, B, is the SCPE response plan updates. Jason, I'm going to let you take the lead on that.
So if you recall, a year ago, we went over more robust changes. This update is mainly related to the contact information, updating the contact information with the new administrators.
There's one change though.
Yeah, the statutory, uh, we're talking about the drill situation, the person having direct charge of the school building. Is that the one you're talking about?
So, how will that come to the board? It doesn't say how, I mean, it says you'll update the board within thirty days. Is that at the next board meeting? Is that with future?
So.
Fourteen?
Yeah. So, that, um, would be at the next board meeting, after the drill that transpired. So, you guys are probably familiar that, uh, yearly, that report comes forward with a building administrators keep a list of, uh, the drills that are conducted. Um, this was actually something we discovered that we were not doing, was the monthly report following the drill. We were doing the yearly report, and I don't think we were alone as a district, so that was added to make sure that we were complying with statute on doing a monthly report. So, we do, the, the administrators time these drills, and, uh, they usually will do a debrief afterwards with the persons involved to talk about how things went. So, it'll just be a report will be given.
Um, so would you see that report being part of the consent agenda?
I would envision it would be, yes. Unless board members had specific, uh, I know, that gets kinda, I honestly didn't know, but until it's brought up, but it's kinda getting down into the weeds a little bit less separate, these are drills, right? So, um, it's part of our responsibility, but I would envision it as part of consent unless we're in specific questions. You wouldn't get a copy of it and call it and discuss it.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
If there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the safety plan, safety response plan updates.
Make a motion to approve the changes for safety response plan.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the updates to the safety response plan. Any further discussion or questions? If not, I'll, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, item C, is the therapy dog. So now we get to open it.
All right, so this is board policy three eighty-three point one, I missed it. We have to complete the board at the same time. So, um, I would like to implement a therapy dog here at Pittsville, at Pittsville School District, specifically at the high school, or that's my main building. Um, so Albert, um, my current dog, he's a little, five months old. He's a pure, uh, purebred Beesla, um, which is a appointed group, the board group. Um, he's got, um, in the next couple of slides, you'll see that, um, you can look up the breed of Beesla. Um, very short hair, doesn't shed a lot. Um, you know, in doing the research, obviously allergies was a big topic of discussion. Um, students that are allergic to animals or hair specifically. Um, so a little bit about Albert, obviously, he likes to spend time in the country, outside, he loves to be around people, other dogs. Um, but he's very much, they call the Beesla breed the Velcro dog, um, very much attached. Um, so another reason why, um, to bring Albert into the school, to target students, so. A little bit about the why behind it, um, helps students learn empathy, understanding and interpersonal skills and compassion. Um, resource there, um, talks about the social emotional piece of learning, um, that therapy dogs bring, the cognitive benefit. There's research that has been done that has improved reading skills over the course, um, from elementary level to middle school to high school. Um, they talk about executive functioning skills as well as, um, you know, their boost of attendance to kids wanting to come to school. Um, and then also problem solving through situations. Um, so a little bit of, uh, this is a resource I was talking about before, but, uh, Beeslas the breed is very, they bring energy, they're affectionate, and very gentle, and they're family oriented. Um, so I've looked at two specific articles, I'm not gonna read it all, um, but these are from student perspectives a little bit. Um, just one of the quotes from the first one, um, a boy mentioned in the article, when I'm about to have a bad day, I just pet and hold that dog with JD to calm down. Um, so we talked about the mental health and the, the social emotional learning of students and what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis. Um, I think we all can say, you know, a dog brightens your day, you know, the waiting, the affection and love. Um, you know, they don't know what's going on in your life, but I think just that, that love and compassion that they bring. Um, you know, there's, I've been in current schools that have had dogs in the building, um, and the students that struggle the most are the students that are impacted the most. Um, and I think that's what's missing here in Pittsville. Um, and then resource number two, at the school district, um, there was, uh, a second article of the specific school district, but, um, they're looking for new ways to provide students, um, and create safe and effective learning environments. Uh, so they established a dog, uh, therapy dog program in that school. Um, and the quote that, um, I picked out, the dog just has an overall calming effect to the classroom atmosphere, um, encouraging, you know, students to calming behavior, helps students who have ADHD, also has proven to, um, improve attendance, which I said before, so. Um, potential challenges, obviously, anytime you implement something, you always, you know, you weigh the pros and cons. Um, obviously, allergies, um, is a huge thing. Um, I reached out to Amper School District, um, they have a therapy dog program. And, uh, this is the, a river is a lab, so obviously sheds more a little longer hair. Um, but this is the, uh, spray that they use in the, in the office area, um, as well as, uh, on the dog specifically. So, um, but obviously, working with our school nurses, um, to provide information about that, we obviously would have a plan put in place if a student is allergic to that dog, to have, you know, additional meeting spots, um, not attending their classroom, not, you know, having, um, that dog close to that person, so. Um, and then there's ongoing costs, vet, food, training, insurance, obviously, it's about a neutral, um, cost I need as the owner, um, which is, is a challenge, right? You know, having a pet, if you ever owned a pet, um, they're costly, but, um, I think the benefit outweighs the cost of that, so. Uh, so here's just a couple of schools that, um, have implemented therapy dog. Um, you can do research, I'm sure there's many more, uh, but these are just ones in the surrounding area, um, that have.
Taylor, do you know we have one? So, we had a therapy dog here in the high school, like, just three years ago, right? It was the English teacher that had a therapy dog, and that's when we put the policy in place.
Got it.
So, I mean, I think we already made a decision that we're in favor of them.
Sure.
Um, so I just wanted to make sure, yeah, and I think it might, I, I mean, we weren't aware that there were any issues
Sure.
with, um, Hale. Mrs. Hale?
Yes.
This Hale?
Gotcha.
Had a therapy dog. I mean, there might have been issues, we weren't aware that there
Sure.
There were issues.
There were issues, there, you know, there were issues. I'll, I'll be glad we had her.
Have you learned from these issues, I would think?
We'll find out.
We'll find out. What? Um, you have a question? Oh, sorry, for one of you.
Yeah, there's a, there's a rumor. No, you weren't aware, um, that dog had attacked another dog two months previous, a huge fight where the other dog had to go to a vet at school. Uh, no, before the dog came here. Um, you were under the impression that was a nice, calm, well-behaved dog. I knew differently at the time, but I didn't say, because it wasn't my place.
Well, and again, from a policy perspective, that should have been addressed and taken care of, because it's clearly in the policy that it needs to be a well-behaved dog. So, I mean, so it should have, I mean, I understand it might not have been, but it should have been addressed. The board policy would demand that the dog is trained and the dog, right?
Yeah.
And that would be up to the building principal
Correct.
to assure the policy was fulfilled.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make sure you
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for letting me know, I actually know that.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, just some additional items, um, obviously, um, Albert, we have pet insurance for Albert. Um, and then these are certifications writing the board policy that he will be receiving. Um, in therapy, when you get a dog certified to be a therapy dog, um, it has to be four and a half months before it starts ther, or just starts, um, obedience training, and then advanced training, then therapy dog, so, and they cannot test out until they're one year old. Um, so a little background, um, on, if you have questions of like, why didn't I wait until this month to start training? So, um, it has to be at least four and a half months, um, if not five months, because they can't test out until they're a year, so. And then phases is next. Yes, okay, so obviously Albert started the training on September fourth. Um, it's a seven-week obedience training once a week. Um, and then he'll move into advanced obedience, oh, sorry, take a week off, and then they go on to advanced obedience training, um, and then take a week off, and then, um, it's a therapy dog training for that next seven weeks, and then they'll test out. Um, again, they have to be a year old before they, um, pass that test or actually take this. And then, so what I'm asking, um, in your board policy, it states that this dog has to be fully certified before entering into school. What I'm asking, and you can read statistics that show, but like accumulating Albert into this, this school year, um, and then working towards full-time. Um, obviously, he would be full-time until he tests out, he's not a year until April sixth. Um, but, you know, from previous school districts that I've worked with, um, you know, accommodating them around the bells and the noises and, you know, larger crowds, um, you know, to, to come, to come to school. So, um, what I'm asking, um, is two days a week to start. Um, we can even bring it on to one day a week, and then slowly implement, um, more time here at school, so.
So you're asking us to specifically look at the training and certification standard under the standards and procedures?
I'm just asking, because in your board policy, it says that the dog cannot be implemented, and maybe I misunderstood it, but it said in the board policy that it can't be in schools until it is fully certified.
Right.
So what I'm asking is that while we're working on obedience training, sitting and walking with me to, um, to be activated, you know, as soon as he turns one, now I'm gonna go five days, probably not, right? So I'm asking to, to, um, implement a couple of days, um, and then keep adding days, so it's not like a full shock of like, this is a change routine, and now it's gonna take a little bit longer, so.
I think what I'm, what I want, like, are you asking for him to be a therapy dog during that time, or?
Like, can't be a therapy dog until he tests out.
So, it's not, it's not really this policy then? We're just being asked for the dog to come join us?
Yeah, and there's actually
I'm just trying to sound like what the ask is.
Yes, absolutely, yes, okay, yes.
And do we have any policy on that, if animals
Animals in the building, yes.
And, is anything
It's prior approval to the administrators, and it has to be for educational purpose, like, we've had kids
So, I guess my question, I don't see it on here, I don't see on the agenda that we even need to approve this. I'm just wondering, do you need something from the board? Is there, because I don't think we need, this policy that's here, I don't think we need to modify this policy, because this policy
That's correct.
isn't relevant, and so which policy is relevant, and
Yeah, in the building.
Do we need to modify it, or can you just give that approval and?
I think this
But I mean, thank you for telling us, this is cool that we're gonna have a therapy dog. So I don't mean to sound, I'm not trying to sound like I'm not, like, supportive, I just am not sure what the ask is.
I think this was the informational piece, and then eventually the board is going to have to approve, like, when Albert becomes, it says
The policy doesn't say, uh-uh. The policy says you just need to submit it, and
You know, we have to have all certification, he has to be certified.
Yeah, presented to the board, I'm ninety-nine percent sure.
An owner who wants to bring a therapy dog to school must submit a written request form to the building principal or district administrator, and the request will be reviewed each school year whenever a different therapy dog will be used. So I, when I read, I mean, unless I'm missing something, there is nothing that needs board approval. We've already put a policy in place, which allows you to do it.
Yeah, certainly, her dog is not
Correct, doesn't may need this, meets the visiting dogs.
They're not, they're visiting dogs. Right. So, the last slide is just some resources.
But, thank you. I mean, it's a great thing to, it's awesome.
Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, first of all, um, I, I think with some of the examples you gave, um, you know, working with students that may have behavioral issues or, or other issues, there is an intersection with, um, our student services department. And I'm wondering what our student services director thinks about this.
Um, being in a previous district with a therapy dog, I'm fully support this.
Okay.
I've personally experienced the positive impact that having a therapy dog can have on kids with mental health concerns.
So.
Yeah.
But if, like, if you bring your dog in, and it's your dog, who handles the dog during the day while you're being principal?
Me. Whenever I go, he goes.
So that wouldn't, like, you say disrupt with your day-to-day duties?
Well, and that would be that piece to judge on, Nate, and I know, like, this isn't, like, this isn't unusual, but, but obviously, that would be part of that test, is if it was disrupting daily duties for some reason, it looks like the other situation, then it would be addressed.
And since it's the principal's dog, it would be, it would revert up to you
Correct.
to make a decision. Okay.
Okay, I have another question.
Yes, and, and, so before you go, Mary Ann, um, just to Nate's comment, but, uh, it can be, like, there may be situations where Albert won't be with me, but he'll still be in my office. Um, and he would be in his kennel, on his kennel, he's gonna be petting as well. Um, so he will be there as well, because, you know, obviously, things happen, right? Emergencies, um, situations, so, again, he's, I think it says in the board policy, he has to be with his owner, um, at all times, but there are times, you know, that he would be in the kennel as well, so. Lunch, probably, is not that ideal place for a dog, right? Um, human food and doing that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I watch that.
Yes.
So, Albert, is he better around large groups of people, in four?
Around for the cross country meet, uh, the first one at home, um, and he did very well. He was, I mean, he laid the grass, he would walk the course a little bit with me, uh, yeah, at Brick's home, uh, you know, sharing the kids on, um, but also, you know, going to, you know, family functions, going to bigger places, going, you know, we go to school for us and run, and around other dogs, other families, but, I mean, school settings, obviously not, um, but I think he would, you know, we've been in large places as well, so.
That's kinda why you wanna test it, obviously.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I think this is great.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, because the Beeslas that I've been around are kinda high-strung. So, you know, if you get a high-strung dog around someone with anxiety or ADHD, you're gonna amplify an issue.
Sure.
And so I just wanna make sure, I mean, you know your dog better wait, so, we gotta make certain that, you know, we don't have
Absolutely.
making, we're not making a bad situation worse. So you're fully confident that this is, this, your dog is not this type of a dog?
Well, he went to the first training, a little obedience training with, um, Dan Leonard in Marshall. Um, and he does this for, uh, he used to be the, with the police
He does a very good
Yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah.
Um, and this is the first time, and Albert's only five months, obviously, he's learning, um, and that's what puppies, right? Um, but he was, I've never seen, and, and I agree, he shows our high strung, but I think it's the owner and the, the time you spend with your dog as well. When you spend a lot of time with your dog, um, and you don't, um, leave them alone, or that, when they're kennelled up, that becomes, you know, their, their high strung. Um, he, um, lost a train of thought. Uh, but anyways, at this, at the training weekend, um, he was, I mean, he wasn't jumping around, he wasn't, you know, he is very, very good at walking on a leash, um, but obviously learning, right? I mean, there was nine other dogs there with a bunch of fifteen other people. Um, you know, so, I mean, that's just a start. Um, but again, if it becomes a problem, then we go back to the board policy and think of it.
And you know, all the first week went, you know, there's a lot of responsibilities that you have, and there's a lot of things that you're finding.
Yeah.
And we don't really want this dog taking away your concentration
Absolutely.
on your priorities. If you're, if he's doing something wrong, you're always having to attend to the dog, you know. Kind of balance, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I would also argue that the board policy in total control of the owner at all times, if your dog handles well, I would say him being in a kennel and accepting that is in control, like, you being in control of him at all times. So I don't think that that would need additional approval either, I think that fits within.
I think communication home to friends too, where you're asking, if you have any concerns, please reach out, so that those concerns are believed in before they become big problems in the case.
I think that's what they do, the last time too, is they share, they send home when the therapy dog came into school, just to make sure there wasn't anyone that didn't want their
In the full
child to be, or, you know, for some reason, so that's a great idea.
Speaking from the four K, mom, please tear them down, I don't want it to go.
So, um, another question I have, and this is probably way down the road, I mean, even maybe next school year, after Albert is certified as a therapy dog, but would there be interest in in him visiting the elementary building?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. If I could convince my husband to get another dog, we would be right in front of Taylor. Because I've seen amazing things happen. I had students who are non-verbal and terrified of dogs and gradually just introduced, you know, just to be able to look at them and then get a little closer and then to actually pet them and it's amazing to see, so. If I can convince my husband, we can be right in front of Taylor. I would take Albert anything we can.
Okay.
Can I, that's both of this. Well, that's what this.
Well, and just adding to that, there are a number of handlers in central Wisconsin that bring their dogs places all the time and they're all certified underneath this, because we have them coming to O D C. There's a gal that works in I T at the Marshall Clinic and, I mean, she brings, she brings them to the town miracle network up at the clinic, she also brings them to O D C, she brings them to, like, so there's, there's many in the area that, I mean, it's just kind of their extra thing that they do because they love it and they have a certified therapy dog. So there could even be some additional resources even in the meantime.
So, I think there are, this is becoming big everywhere, if there's any touch of any mental health, anything that can help out, you know, Sheriff's Department has one in jail, it's, and it's a game changer. So I don't hear negative feedback from, I mean, it's when something happens, a dog does something stupid, right? Then that dog's a dog, but, you know, you're going to kind of expect some little things to happen. You know, I just think that. This isn't, this is another great idea, as long as it's kind of a dog, handle it.
So I did want to, this would not be my first experience, in my former district, we actually, a local, Doc's Hoon House would bring in therapy dogs into the school, that should start the training. And what we would do is we would have student volunteers that would come in that were struggling readers and they would sit down with a book and they would read to the dog and you would be amazed that kids who were afraid to read alouds in the classroom would sit with that dog and they would read to the dogs without, whatever, if they had a stutter or if they were afraid to read aloud and stuff, so this is fantastic stuff.
I have one last question. Why would you choose the name Albert?
Well, I like the name Mel and.
Looks like an Albert.
He does look like an Albert, so we've always had these shows in our family for every year, years and years. I like people names for dogs, I don't like like Snickers, sorry for the name of Snickers. Uh, my dog's Snickers. I like real names, but also like Albert, we always had one called Al.
Okay.
And so.
Maybe with your grandpa.
No, God, no, 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 very unique, you don't see a lot of Alberts. I had, like, some guy at the cross-country meet said, why did you name an Albert? I've never heard a dog named Albert, so why would I call it anybody, you know?
Albert.
Yeah. No, no.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We are now on to item number ten, legislative updates. So, campaign season continues. I do want to let you know that I had an email late this afternoon from Senator Cory Township's office about a visit. They reached out to me. So if, and when that is scheduled, I will let you and Preston Ford know. And I think that probably one of our top, top questions or top issues to bring forward is going to be, yes, the big picture funding formula, but also funding for in-bond students. So.
Okay, glad to have you.
So we'll let you know. Item number eleven, public comments, per school board policy 187. None from Mr. Klein? No?
I wasn't planning on it, but I could give an update on the after-school program.
You have to register though, I think.
Well, then, no, nothing for tonight.
Okay, future agenda items. We will be getting from the state of Wisconsin, from the Department of revenue, we'll be getting the certified levy amounts in the month of October. And that is when we'll have to have a special meeting. It usually comes like around the twentieth or something of October, I believe.
The certified levy is usually the fifteenth, but I believe it's the sixteenth unless it hits a weekend. And this year, we should hopefully have it on the fifteenth, Tuesday. It'll take me a few days to do some number crunching and, you know, see where we actually fall. I guess if we could plan a meeting that last week.
I'm wondering the week, the twenty-first.
That might be pushing it.
Well, it depends on what day of the week.
Well, true, Thursday, Friday, maybe, otherwise Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Well, any, any day in October, because we'll actually have to certify two levies. I'll notify all the clerks that will be certifying two levies and then after the election, you know, the day after basically, I'll be sending them documentation, which.
Who was that, Chris? Can you be forward to the twenty-fifth, Anthony Gray?
Okay.
Albert better for me also, I think I'm going to be out on Monday, the twenty-eighth.
So did I hear October twenty-first as an option here?
I can't.
So it's Thursday.
The twenty-fourth would be a Thursday, we could do it like before the day starts or.
Yeah, usually it'll be seven, seven-thirty.
It'll be twice as long, so we're going to have two budgets, two levies, so, I mean, it's going to be longer than a ten-minute meeting, it'll be half an hour, forty-five minutes probably.
I could do seven a.m. that morning, I can.
What morning are we talking about?
You might make something, maybe we're on the twenty-third in the mornings.
I could open to the twenty-third at the end of the day, I'm gone Monday, Tuesday.
I can do that at the end of the day on twenty-third also.
We need three people, we need three people for a forum.
So Wednesday, the twenty-third, we're looking at right now.
I could do, in the evening, you can't do a party on that day if you care about.
Well, the evening, six p.m., like a normal party for start time.
Yeah, that works for me.
Wednesday, the twenty-third.
Wednesday, the twenty-third.
That's fine, yes, that's fine.
Student representative, unless you really want to come, you'll have to. But if the treasurer wants to really learn about school finance, the treasurer has to you.
There'll be other ways.
Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like we've got consensus on Wednesday, October twenty-third at six p.m. to set the final levy.
That will send it in by then, so.
Okay. Any other agenda items that folks want to bring up for the future?
I would just indicate, as I said earlier, the founding coalition presentation, PNCs for the year and goals.
And our personal building goals?
Yep, building goals are likely to be that board meeting as well where we will present the building goals to you.
Okay. So well, if there is no further business or further discussion on future agenda items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and it's September and it's still low.
Fifteen, then, have a floor to adjourn, we'll set.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Vote.